All right, I will call this meeting of the Lutheran School Board to order. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the principle which stands: One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Okay. All right. We'll call Catherine is not with us tonight. Ivy Orless.
Alicia Lawson here.
Tim West.
Here.
Um David Gustin.
Present.
Joseph Sazakis. Joseph Gustin, long in the state. Sazakis, thank you. Okay. Uh all but Catherine are here. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh we have a modification tonight. The uh I've updated the numbers that need to be transferred between accounts for item six point one. And I um Kelly has them. She can read the reading. It's time for that motion.
Also, um we're tabling the pollings. Four point five?
I'm insisting she's gonna present it and I already told her not to yet. Uh yeah, four point five is gonna be tabled. I I told her next meeting. But I left it on the agenda.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Lutheran School Board meeting of September sixth, two thousand twenty-three as written or with corrections.
So moved.
Seconded. Any discretion? All those in favor? Four to zero? Okay. Um are there any public comments on the Zoom?
None of our guests.
None visible right now. Any here in the building?
Yes, I have comments.
Just a moment. If you could stand up uh over at the uh.
Lecter. Lecter.
Moving. I ask the ability to project.
We need you to use the microphone so that it can get picked up by the recording device.
Test.
Okay, my um comment is in the form of a question. Um this is for the high school. I want to note the high school this year is continuing uh the practice of uh having the bathroom doors open all day in an effort to uh prevent vaping. That was a real problem for many students last year. Um. It is something that concerns me.
Okay. Thank you, we will do some research and then get back. All right, any other public comment?
Yes. I have a couple of concerns um. Um I have a couple of concerns. Um one of my concerns is the school buses um arriving after breakfast times and some after the first period bell starts. Um which is hard for some families who children don't have adequate means for food all the time. Um especially like the grade school for one, um which those kids more need breakfast. Um like I know my child's bus, I've been driving my child um because the bus doesn't arrive to the school until uh almost um ten minutes before nine. I think what maybe off about days. So the the school breakfast is from eight fifteen to eight thirty. I know the carts sometimes stay there till eight forty-five. And then they the they pretty much pack those up and some of the buses are arriving after that time. So it kind of impacts some of the students. And um seeing some of the arrival times in the high school, the kids also don't have in middle school, they don't have opportunities to grab breakfast or enough time to even eat. Um because the first bell is already going sometimes. So those are some of that's one of my concerns.
Before you move on, uh do you know which buses are arriving late?
Yep, I can write, I can write them all down. Because if you look at the times like in the grade school, if you look at the bus routes, you can see that the times are not until like eight forty-five.
Oh, eight fifty-five.
Okay. Another concern is I know there's been an issue with the vape sensors and cameras. Um and in the packet, I'm learning that this is gonna be implemented in the middle school. Um that is concerning. Is there plans to open the bathroom doors in the middle school as well and keep them open? Um I do also is bringing up the bathroom doors being open at the school. Um it's invasion of privacy. Um I know uh a lot of the students are uncomfortable because there's gaps in some of the doors. I used during when I was a bus driver last year at the end of the school year, I used the bathroom directly across from the main office. There is over just over a one inch gap on the handicap accessible door. Um the doors are within a few feet from um the main door. So students going by can easily see into these bathrooms and it is very uncomfortable for a lot of people. And I I think that sends like the wrong message to students um that were more concerned about vaping, which is just a few students, um and creating a an environment that's not healthy for the children.
When you are talking about the gap in the bathrooms, are you talking about the high school?
The high school.
Okay, so I just because I'm not super familiar with that school, I'm thinking not that this is one way there, but just that I think it's clarification that the stall doors open to the mirrors, not to the entrance doors, is that correct?
Oh. I can't remember, but I know the handicap door opens in. Um it is not, I mean it's even just for students, even with the doors closed, for students to be in the bathrooms and it sometimes people have, you know, it's uncomfortable.
Sure.
And then to have a door open where students are passing by the s- um I know Jay stands in the hallway because he likes to monitor the hallway. That's uncomfortable, especially when the female bathroom is right across. And it's uncomfortable for any student to have to have a bathroom wide open when that happens such a private home, you know.
Yep, okay.
Private time.
Okay. Thank you uh for that clarification, I appreciate it. Do you have any other concerns or want to clarify?
Um and also between the monies that we're spending on like the vape sensors and the cameras for the to catch people vaping and like wifi in the packet going into the shed for bus drivers, I don't understand how we have we have a lot of maintenance and repair issues and are deteriorating in schools and why we're not using that money to to help fix our schools and putting on frivolous things every moment.
What uh can you tell me what you mean when you say that there are things that need to be fixed in the schools that were not being addressed?
Uh we have quite a strategic plan of all the that big book of all the issues that we need to fix on our schools. Maintenance issues that have gone set aside for many years. So we have this huge book, you know, of issues to help, you know, maintain our schools. And but yet we're spending money on vape sensors and cameras with a few that's impacting the many. And now we're putting wifi out in the bus, so there's time for that when that money can be better implemented to fix in our schools.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other public comments? Okay. Uh moving on to the superintendent's report.
Trying to finish it up here. Um my son might uh report with with the packet, receive that. Uh in addition to that, I just need to say it's been a little bit crazy this week. Um started off with and been doing this show for a long time and um what I experienced yesterday was a was a very was a first. I'm gonna give you the I'll try to give you the re- digest version, but it started with um it started with not feeling very well. But I was out of the building up at Walgreens and um I got a call from my wife who was working, referred as working. I'm not ready to listen to it, just so you all know. Um is working one day out in 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 Rennica and she kind of noticed from her superintendent that um some of the Rennica schools were in lockdown and didn't really say why and um but it had something to do with the neighboring district. Well, we're a neighboring district, so I called Colleen and said, can you use your sleuthing skills and see if there's something going on that we're not aware of yet? Uh as it turns out, and you probably know that that wasn't us and it was a situation in Kent. So however, um then I hear um further from the superintendent and at Rennica through my wife that there was some sort of chase going on to them too. And as I'm sitting there at Walgreens, a with a uh fuel company truck goes by me. I could hear that wall away from me with four police cars uh sirens on and it went pretty fast. And I'm sure by now, although I didn't see it on the news, but I'm sure you're all aware that it ended up um uh rolled him over on the turn and he back bonded to to them. Got from town, tried to get back on, rolled over. Um so then we were told initially that the person who got out of him was running. That was to me close to our schools um to do for going to not we didn't really ever call it a shelter in place, but basically said we're not gonna let people in or out. So Mel's High School did that. Uh that didn't last long um because they did apprehend the the person. But it's just like that was I I'd never experienced anything like that. Um you make that connection between a police action or how we have to respond at school. To actually see it was just like, wow, this is crazy. So uh today's been a little crazy as well when you talk anything like that. And so that was uh this was crazy. Uh so I did wanna let you know that this Saturday we will be opening our turf field for a competition at the hockey game. Is that eleven o'clock? Followed by the football game at one thirty. I'm sure it was in your report, was it a date or time? Okay, good. Always still your thunder. Uh so and obviously you're all invited to anything that we're doing at any time, but I think this, you know, this is the opening of the field. So it'll be an opportunity to be there. Um love to have you be there and join in the festivities. I don't think there'll be a lot of festivities, but just joining being there and um welcoming our teams to our new turf facility, so. And it's pretty cool that the Philanthropy Team will be the first ones to uh to compete on. So that's a good thing. Um also wanna share with you that I attended a law review conference today by given by Drummond Whitson in the Gaspin. And it's Drummond Whitson, and people always say Drummond Hand Whitson, it's Drummond slash Whitson, so. Anyway, this is the book um, so I would just talk about this before the meeting. It was a great conference. Uh their 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 information is incredibly valuable. Um but basically they they grouped laws that were passed in past legislative session um into the they put summations as they affect schools. Um you get five different categories. Um the conference is worth going to, but it can be a little boring because they everything you need to know, they go into book. And they they take a whole day to go through what they've, you know, you can read for yourself. But it does provide you the opportunity to know a lot of questions. A lot of times the uh the value and and even when you have all information fronting is just now a lot of people interpreting it and stuff. And I had some questions as well, so um it was good, so. Which later on in the agenda, we'll be talking about the fall conference. Drummond will be doing at least one session, multiple sessions usually on school law for school board members. So um we're gonna talk about that later, so I won't talk anymore about it now. Um but I can tell you that just based upon the uh what I've read and what we we heard about today, that the policy committee is gonna be really busy. Some things we're waiting on like restraint. Um there's three different restraints that we're looking at. Policy committee has been on hold. Um that's now come to uh it's now had rules out for that. And truancy. Another lot of stuff on truancy, so um a lot of stuff we'll be taking a look at. And uh well, yes, questions after the the uh we have two appointments. Probably miss some of their names, it's simple as seal. Especially the tech three uh at the grade school, no one kneeling as a bus driver. And I think with that with his hire, we are fully staffed.
Any questions? Any questions for the superintendent about his report today? Okay. Um school board cherry report, I have just a couple things to say. Um Alicia and I reviewed the Lutheran middle school student, parent and faculty handbooks and um they that was on our last agenda for possible motion to table that so that we could take a look at it. There was no substantive substantive changes, so it does not need to come back before you folks for any voting. Um we did take the time to meet with Lori and went over any suggestions or edits uh for her to take a look at and see if she wanted to make any of those changes or not. And um then she will get those published out to her parents and her staff. Um we, Alicia and I are currently reviewing the grade school staff handbook. Um we need to make an appointment to sit down with Joeline and Debbie uh maybe next week uh to go through any edits that we have for you. Um I did review the strategic plan draft for systematic edits uh and sent the left margin for her to review before that gets sent out to public for public comment sessions. Um so that's what I've been up to recently. Um I think that's it for me. So committee reports, finance.
Um yes, we met, we have quite a list here. Um.
No, on Sunday.
On Sunday. Uh twenty-seven A, twenty-seven B, twenty-eight N, twenty-eight B, twenty-nine A, twenty-nine B, thirty A, thirty-one A. Is that order, sorry? Thirty B, one A, one B, two A, two B, three A, three B, four A, four B, A R O four, five and six.
That's a lot of work.
It's all done.
Nice job.
I think.
So that's all caught up?
Obviously, uh usually I use seven, I use seven.
Thank you. Um we, do you have anything for policy during this section before we get into the meeting of the committee later? Okay, nothing. When is the next policy committee meeting? Wednesday at four. Like next Wednesday. Twenty-second. You're in the all-purpose room or will be in the small conference room?
I missed something on my report and it's just a, not a clarification, we did change this before, but I I um like Colleen sort of get into this rhythm of of board meetings and we the next board meeting is October eleventh, not October fourth. So we have two meetings in a row, eleventh and eighteen. That is on the calendar, just I was just planning for the fourth and I realized it wasn't appearing. I was like, I have to change this thing.
Thank you. Okay. Um negotiations, we don't have anything right now. We are in the process of uh to ask the committee. We'll backtrack here a little bit. This year, we're going to be doing the teacher uh agreement and uh we've asked the renegotiator to uh review the contract and start putting together their um suggestion edits and changes. And once they have done that, they will let you know and we will start putting together our um list of dates for when we need to take care of that. So um expect over the next few months to be hearing some updates, although really won't be getting much until we have the executive session to go over it all and side effects to happen from there. But things are starting to gently roll along that process. Um the last thing I hear is curriculum and there is no standing curriculum uh committee at this point. So we, I think uh we'll remove that from this list and then if there is a standing committee, we'll put it back on the list. But for right now, Megan um provides her administrative statement uh every month. And so I think that that covers that until or unless we have something specific that we need to address. So unless there is some concern about removing that from the um from the committee report section, I think we'll.
I just had a question because I was actually gonna bring this up today. Uh in Jay's report, I wanted to ask him to clarify if there is a curriculum committee, since he has a bullet points that says ongoing for the one high school by going and our curriculum committee. So just hoping to send an advisory committee or?
That's just how they, the school base, how they're
Okay.
Doing their stuff, not the district based stuff. Um that's a good question. Um so is is there any um anybody opposed to removing that from the committee report section of the policy and adding it back if we did clear the mood? Thank you. Uh okay, so let's go through the administrators' reports. We'll do that one at a time. We'll start with the grade school report from Joeline and Debbie. Uh the reports were sent out to uh the public and to the school board last week. And does anybody have any questions, comments or concerns for Joeline? Doesn't look like Debbie's on the Zoom, so it could just be for Joeline.
Uh I just wanna say the amount of people, the percentages that came was amazing. Um also a feedback as as a parent here, have a parent count on um for open house, I had kids at both schools and it was a bit of a juggle. I did reach out to Lori about that. Um but to get all four kids to be able to see their teachers and I didn't know if any other parents had that issue as far as juggling and looking at. But just something to keep in mind for next year.
Thank you. Any other comments for Joeline? Okay. All right, um. The next report is the uh middle school for Lori. Does anybody have any questions, comments or concerns? Okay.
Great.
Um next is for Jay who is on the Zoom. Does anybody have any questions, comments or concerns about uh Jay's administrator report? Alicia, do you have any question other than that we already talked about?
Um I don't have any questions, but I do like to see the last um little bit here um to do the best academically, because since I'm building, I just really appreciate that.
Okay. You're off the J for right now. Um special education for Sue Bossat who's here in the room. Does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns for Sue?
Not really a question, just a comment. Um Alicia, I had a good idea last time about the ed tech shortage that maybe we should seriously plan a parent uh not a rather parent, a community event of trying to get teach people how to become ed techs. It might bring a feeling, I'm not sure, but it's worth it, I think it's worth a shot.
I'll piggyback on that and just say people have reached out to me. It was actually a good, conscious idea uh because they are interested.
Excellent. All right, uh the next is for Megan who is here in the room with us for the Director of Teaching and Learning. Does anybody have any questions, comments or concerns for Megan?
I have a question. So I'm I'm still kind of stuck on the Sophia thing. You're not that one. So I'm wondering, because I I still end up with a magnitude of data um to to compare um whether you have test scores, would it be um advisable or encouraged to help parents or just let parents know they have the opportunity that they could administer the test app and get the data? Because is it just name that's doing that has changed it a bit?
So the through year model for third through eighth and tenth graders or second year of high school gives you two scores in the spring. So the fall test isn't is purely diagnostic, which means that it's totally adaptive. They just can't call it that growth and it's not being sold to us. Um same with the optional winter window. In the spring, that's where we get this criterion based main piece, but a third of it is still available. Um so students do receive a great score. Um and to be honest, we were having attended two separate events put on by D A O A one was actually on Monday where Sophia has done statistical studies of schools last year that double tested. So they tested with growth and they tested with the model. And although some of the trends are that the growth was a little bit higher, it wasn't statistic using it. So one or two points and on average, and they use like like they used statistical tests, they're not comparing averages. Um it it was no stu- no significant difference except for I believe it was math at the tenth grade level and that this is a baseline here for that test anyways because they didn't have enough problems in their testing. Um so I hear um that he's been using so long as a local assessment, but we are and there have been some work at the state level and with our new Leah's folks um to prove that the RIT scores are comparable uh that we're getting this right. There there's a lot of conversation around that right now, especially with folks in the physician. So that's why they put scattered webinars and anyone and the public is curious. They are both posted publicly on the media website.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else have questions, comments or concerns for Megan? Okay. Uh next is extracurricular and maintenance. Uh Joel is not on the Zoom, so when we have anything, we can get it to him. Uh does anybody have any questions, comments or concerns to to send to Joel? Okay. Uh next is uh new for us. Uh we have a new admin with nutrition, Samantha Baldwin. Does anybody have any questions, comments or concerns? She's not with us today in this meeting, but we can get that information to her. Okay. Uh I guess the only thing I would say is that I like to see all the fresh local produce being used. I think that's awesome. Um all right, next is the technology report. Uh and he is here with us today, so uh any questions that anybody has can be asked there. Uh questions, comments or concerns for technology report.
Yeah, I think I've touched on it. I was wondering what the uh since Josh Wheeler asked to extend wifi coverage to the outdoor bus shed, um just wondering what that's for?
Um I believe Joel wanted uh his bus drivers to be able to do a quick email notification check uh prior to or at the conclusion of the year.
Without having to go in school to do it.
Um correct. And and so uh to the point about the the cost, I'm pers- pursuing as a solution um using my a MiFi hotspot. Um and that would involve a monthly s- uh data service charge with between fifteen and twenty-five dollars a month. Uh if um that that would be on a test basis to see if that was uh a solution to address the concern that you're touching on.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Um I appreciate how detailed your your report was as far as covering multiple areas. Um it's up to you if you wanna continue it being this long or you want it to be a one page short and sweet, then we can ask questions. Either one is fine. Um other board chairs might feel differently.
I have a question. Um also feedbacking on something that um was mentioned earlier, installing cameras, is that I seem to remember a conversation that we had um about cameras to take, is that like a something that goes together? Is that a bathroom thing?
So the the cameras are looking to be uh positioned to monitor incoming and outgoing traffic too.
To the bathroom.
Correct.
But not in the bathroom?
And not not in the.
It won't be angled so that it can see into the door? It'll just be like across the threshold?
So we uh we're uh by so just a couple of things. So obviously it's I just wanted to say this is a project I'm inheriting, you know, and shepherding through with the assumption that Lutheran Public Schools, this is a priority for you know, unless it is a substantial cost. Uh so we are having uh just I just signed the scope of work agreement uh with our uh in conjunction with our E plus representatives who are for that at us. And so we are going to get signed a project manager in which case we're gonna work out the details of the scheduling of the work and of course pointing to the cameras, which will be part of that process and making sure everything is up to date.
Thank you. I must say I'm still confused. I thought there wasn't cameras involved then. Can we have a conversation about this? I seem to remember a conversation where um the vapor the vape sensors were there and the cameras, that was like not being.
I think the conversation that we had that I'm remembering is that the vape sensors weren't in the bathrooms, but the cameras would not be in the bathrooms?
Okay.
I'd like to know more.
And also need to add, um again, as Paul said, this is a project that's that he's inherited, not that he's created. But the uh there will be the the there is definitely a connection between vaping and the cameras, but the the desire to have updating cameras. But the desire to have updating cameras in the middle school and high school existed way before the whole vape issue. They, they kind of go hand in hand. But we have that issue. We have an ongoing conversation about cameras at the grade school. And that's a safety thing related to our, our Alice training and our other things that we're doing. So it isn't, I'm a little squirrely about marrying the, the vape thing. We did not have a vape, you know, installing the vape type thing. We would still be having camera installation. It just changed a little bit with the, can we go to words and let's go and so to speak. And the notion of vapes in the bathroom is something that I actually supported way before Ms. Dufour came on board and became a bigger issue. When I, before I came here to Lutheran Public School System that had a similar type of problem. It's, it's a problem. I don't want us to think that it's not a problem. And we installed vape sensors there. And it had great success as a result of it.
I have, I just wanted to touch on that. We, I'm just a little concerned that message we're sending our students because I, I know the jail system very well as my partner. And the jails don't even have cameras or drastic measures in, in the cells. It's only five cells out of this one jail that has cameras. You know, and we're facing our core values of, I mean, our core values. But anyways, integrity.
We have them posted here soon.
Right, so I mean, our core values are respect, compassion, integrity, responsibility, and cooperation. So I mean, as adults, we should be leading by example. And what example if we're treating the schools like almost, you know, harsher than jails with their inmates? That, that doesn't create a warm and loving environment for our children to have a better education. You know, I think there's other measures that we could have took in to help address the vape issues. And sometimes, you know, if that discussion was like brought to the board with the many different, you know, people here, we could have created maybe a little bit better system than sending a direct message of having doors open, which kind of makes students feel uncomfortable, privacy. If a student has been ever victimized, that creates trauma in a child. You know, and stuff. So I, I think we really need to start to look at this before we push any further with the vape sensors and cameras right outside back windows. I mean, it's just, I mean, if we're supposed to have respect and compassion, integrity, responsibility, cooperation, that sends you an opposite message.
I'm not disagreeing with anything you just said, but I will say this again. The vape, I mean, the camera, discussion about cameras and the need to improve our cameras existed way before any discussion about the vape sensors. And the number one thing that is always throughout the history of schools, number one thing that parents expect more than anything else is safety. And our recent fragment of cameras in place have a hundred percent to do with safety.
Okay. Anything else? Next is transportation. Josh is not with us at this meeting today. But again, any questions can get to him. Do we know how many runs are just number of, not bus runs specifically, but percentage of buses that are getting to schoolway?
I'm not sure, but I know there's at least four buses because I can drop my daughter off and I can hang out. And I know there's about three, four buses that, that are very close to that forty-five minute mark, which is about the time they class down. I know the schools, Jolene and all them do accommodate, but it's, it's just really hard when kids are worried about, you know, having that meeting in school and parents are banking on it and these buses are getting in late. So if there's a way that we can accommodate all the students in all our schools right now until the bus stuff gets more regulated, that way that's one less thing your child has to worry about.
I know you don't want me to respond to that, but I, I, these issues were brought up before. I, I would say if you ask the administrators, they are a hundred percent resolved in all of the buildings.
And this morning buses were in all of them and by eight thirty-three. So the times you see on the bus routes were suggested times ahead of school starting. They're not arriving late at this time. And if buses do arrive, because late really isn't considered past the arrival time until after eight forty. And if buses are arriving after eight forty, breakfast is always available. Even when kids are coming in after nine o'clock, they come in a different door. And the staff in the office always steps out and says, have you had breakfast? Would you like breakfast? And we go into the cafeteria and get breakfast. So all students are able to get breakfast. So, and buses are not arriving late at this time unless there's a difficulty. But they're on schedule.
And at the middle school, same thing. They're, they're in where we're buying our breakfast. This year we changed it. We actually eat breakfast down in the cafeteria this year. So it's multi-grade, so it's social a little bit. And students can, we have, they start eating at seven fifteen when they enter the building till eight forty-five when we get ready to transition for announcements. But we also have the opportunity at the middle school to have breakfast when they go for their break first thing. So some students eat breakfast at five o'clock at home. Maybe at seven, they're not ready to eat. So when they go down for their break at eight thirty-five, they then get the school breakfast and it counts. So they're definitely an opportunity for them all to eat throughout the day.
And I can speak to that a bit to the seventh grade school twice a week. And very rarely would be a parent in shopping and get off late. But once in time, casual time, to get breakfast.
But I, I think the most important thing for everybody here, and I'm glad to see your board, is a lot of people gave us too. We had a couple of parents that reached out to me concerned. Also reached out to Jolene, interested in grade school. Very respectful, very understanding, like everybody has been about beginning the year, blah, 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 this type of stuff. But the, the most important thing that people need to hear is, we all understand. We offer free breakfast for, for a reason. We know how important kids having breakfast is. It doesn't matter if they're a grade school student, a middle school student, or a high school student. We want any kid that wants to eat breakfast to have the opportunity to eat breakfast. Obviously, getting the runts regulated is, is a key to that. But even if they're not, we're going to accommodate the students because making sure they get the appropriate breakfast every single day is, is a top priority for us.
Okay, anybody else on transportation? Sorry, just finishing my question. Alright, and the final? Yep, the final report is from adult education about the Kennebec neighbors adult education. Josh is not on the Zoom or here with us, but if anybody has any questions or comments or concerns, we can get that information to you. Okay, alright. He's off the hook. Alright, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, four point five is being moved to the next meeting. Ms. Burgess is not here with us today. She was given a different date for her situation. So that is the end of reports. Moving on now to old business. Five point one, a discussion of policy IKF graduation requirements. This was tabled from last meeting. Alicia? So just guide me through this a little bit because I'm not sure if this is speaking to you. Sure. The policy committee could ask to have this particular piece of policy brought back up for a discussion about potentially making a change regarding some discussion that was brought up by a community member and having the fifteen, equivalent of fifteen hours per year be offered during the school day instead of on a student's phone. So we just need to have a discussion about how we feel about that change.
Can you tell me about that? Sure, it's on our packet.
It's actually, actually it's not bad.
Where is it?
She usually shun this all the pages. She didn't spend it. Policy IKF is the first one under the policies for first reading. Under the ones of first reading.
Okay, so it's just for the back.
For the back, yeah. I can tell you, would you like to do it?
Please do.
So this was brought up by a member of the policy committee, but not in her role as a policy committee member, but as a board member. And she was responding to a parent meeting here. And I think she feels very strongly that obviously Catherine's not there.
If you're looking at the packet, it's green page number thirty-seven.
Yeah. Oh yes, it's actually there. Yep. Anyway, but we talked about it at the policy committee. I think it's a really big conversation. As a matter of fact, we had some draft language that came out of our conversation. That's just two of them. So really, we wanted to put it on the agenda first. I, I don't want this to, regardless of how you go with this, change the vote tonight because we have another month before we have to go on for a second reading. But basically, she wanted to ensure that opportunities would be made available during the regular student day. Like every other requirement we have for students, you know, English requirement assigned. Unless they choose to do something on their own, which we accept, we make time for in school. So she wanted to ensure that all students, regardless of what issues they may have, would have the opportunity to earn their service hours within the school day. I talked to Jay briefly about it, you know, we, we profit if we can do this. And so we just added the language. If you look at page two of the policy, it says opportunities to earn community service hours will be provided within the school day. But students may earn their hours outside of the school day as well. So somewhat this already happened. Some earn, double earn sixty their freshman year. There are just some kids that are really into it and do that. But so sixty is the minimum to earn the credit. We took away the thing that said it had to be fifteen a year. We initially read into this policy and this came up. So what Catherine really wanted, I'll, you guys should talk about, is whether you concur with the idea that we make opportunities inside of the school day, the school calendar, or not? That really is the essence of the question. Are you okay?
I think for me, coming from a family where community service is a really important part of what we do, I would be unhappy if Will were in the high school and he were required to do his hours during the school day because he does so much on his own. So I just wanna make sure that the language is clear that there are opportunities that are available and not required opportunities.
Are you okay with the language of the type? Opportunities to earn the community service will be provided within the school day as students may earn their hours outside the school day as well?
I think I would prefer to say something like opportunities to earn the community service hours will be made available within the school day instead of will be provided. Because I, right now we have Jay who knows our current intent. But with a new superintendent, they may not know that her intent is just that it's available, not that it's a requirement other than the day of caring.
Okay.
I agree.
So you think Jay provided available makes it, makes it be made available?
I just have one more question. Are we doing the entire fifteen hours per year available during the school day?
Fifteen a year.
Somebody, one of the community members contacted Catherine and made a really good observation that not every student has the ability to get to a place to do community service hours on their own or has a supportive family where they would help them do that. And if we're making it a requirement for graduation, we need to be able to allow for those students or others who are just not inclined to do it on their own, to be able to get the hours for their graduation requirement throughout the school year.
And I think when I talked to Jay about this, we obviously can speak for stuff that he wants. But I think it was initially, I felt the same way that he did, which is we, we make exceptions. We, we get to know those circumstances and so if kids are short and we know the reasons for them being short, we make exceptions for them. And I think the parent who called and said, hey, that's, that's really singling kids out and that's, I think what we wanna do is we want them to have sixty hours of community service as opposed to forty-five and then circumstances don't allow you. So we make, kind of make exceptions for you. And so this will be a bigger burden for the school. Hopefully not in future years, maybe more days. But, but we, we need to ensure that all kids will earn their time during, have the opportunity, made available during the school day, during most of the year to get their community service hours. That's the difference. So you want to add anything more to that, Jay?
Yeah, I mean, I, I fully support this language. Like we had discussed and I think we kind of each approached the march a little bit. And Tim is there, she can probably speak for this. But you know, we're with her since spring of last year to kind of look at some of this language and we were able to bring to the staff over the school year. Just updating communities average pieces. And making sure, it's a big push for me as we're talking in the, in the later time to make the fifteen a year a case in favor of the required piece that we don't, we shouldn't hold kids in having the community service at school and still give them a lot of street food outside because they're more likely to do that public news, but that we are giving the school staff a hundred percent. We could stop greed, avoid on their stuff. We can provide these activities within the school day, go to the. So that's, that's one of the great things about with the high school and staff is they're fully on board with this and understood and really want to support all students to be able to make sure they're used to the school. So I feel like we're already there as a staff. Just putting in the policy the right way. Just kind of put that on this kind of part of the table.
Thank you, Jay. Yep. That day of caring, do students, are students able to use those hours towards this? Yeah, well, that's five or six, five hours.
Five automatically. And let, well, at advisor discretion. If there's a kid who shows up and sits in the corner the whole time, we don't have to give them five hours of community service. But kids come and participate, they get five hours.
Awesome. And I just wanna clarify, our commitment is to use the microphone. Our commitment is to provide opportunities. That's why I just said, if some kid shows up day of caring, doesn't do anything, they may not get any hours that day.
I, I know it's not really, I'd just like to add, one thing I, I might be hearing, and I might be hearing it wrong, is I think some concern might be that you think, the way you're reading is that we're going to have to build more whole school days into doing community service, and that's not what this language is saying at all. I could tell you right now that I have students working for me independently on their own time doing projects that they're getting community service for during the school day. And, and, and I've told, I made it very clear to the whole staff, to Jay, I've got enough community service with all the video projects, everything that I'm asked to do. There's always, and I know Ms. Marshall of the library is always looking for people to help her with various enormous tasks she's working on. There is plenty of opportunities within the building if students need them, but we're not having to create like a second, a third day of caring in order to meet fifteen a year for kids.
Thank you for that clarification.
So I'm sensing that Catherine, if she was here, would be saying so we're all on board with the notion of doing this? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's agreed, I do. Okay. Next is, I won't, no. I talked about this during my chair report. Five point two and five point three are not being brought up for vote because there is no substantive change and policy does not require us to vote on the middle school faculty and staff handbooks if there is no substantive change.
I understand it was the, I understand is that the, I thought the updated agenda didn't move that.
Well, I'm using the.
Got it. Okay. Alright. Never mind. I will entertain a motion to approve the following policies or exhibits for second reading. CBI Evaluation of Superintendent. CVIR Superintendent Evaluation Time Long. IHVG Home School Children. CHCAA Student Handbooks. GBE. GBEC drug related workplace. EEAG use of private or school owned vehicles on school business. EEAG dash E personal automobile use form.
So moved.
Second, thank you. Uh any discussion? Um we'll go through each of these um individually. Any discussion about um CBI evaluation of superintendent? Let me go over what we changed, okay. So for CBI, um under section G, uh we have the following. School board members who are new to the board may opt not to participate in the evaluation process during the first year on the board or may opt not to answer questions that they do not feel they have enough knowledge to evaluate the superintendent. This applies for the May evaluation only. Added language, added language. Uh this was not included prior to uh this reading of it and it was something that was brought um after our spring evaluation process. Um any comments, concerns, or questions for board members about that change?
Yeah, I just want to clarify the the that whole section G was the after the first reading. The last line, this applies for the May evaluation, it was added in our last policy.
Thank you, I just meant it was not in the current used policy, thank you for that clarification. Uh okay, um the next policy that we're looking at um. CVIR, the superintendent evaluation timeline. Doesn't look like there were any changes to that. I'm not seeing any.
No changes.
Yeah. No changes in any of the rest of them, okay. Uh well, that's not true. Um CHCAA does have one language change.
Okay, can I just clarify, there are no changes since first reading?
Thank you. Uh all right, let's go quickly through the IHVG homeschooling. There are no changes to the homeschooling policy, IHVG. Any questions, comments, or concerns from either of you? Okay, um CHCAA student handbooks. For student handbooks, we changed a shall to may. The board may conduct an annual review of the student handbooks. Thank you. Any questions or comments or concerns? Um GBECDrug free workplace. We have no changes to GBEZ. Questions or comments from either of you? Um EEAG use of private or school owned vehicles on school business. Uh for EEAG, we have added, changed the language to or school um in several locations in that policy. Uh okay, any questions or comments from either of you? Okay, um EEAGE, the form. This looks like it is a new form that replaces an old form, so totally updated.
Yes.
This is one that um Joel Stoneton had come up with, EEAG that just replaces the old form. Any questions or comments from either of you on this one? IKF graduation.
Don't.
That's what I suggested, okay.
No, no, okay.
All right, um I keep having to flip back and forth with her. Um all right, any other questions, comments, or concerns before we take a vote on um approving these for second reading? Okay, all those are favorable? Four is zero, thank you. All right, moving on to new business. I will entertain a motion to transfer funds between articles in the fiscal year twenty three budget to ensure that no line is overdrawn in accordance with May law and as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Um what I am going to say out loud differs from what is written on your paper, so get your pens ready. Um from article one to article eight, transfer two thousand five hundred, two hundred five thousand dollars. Yep, from article one to article eight, two hundred five thousand. From article two to article eight, twenty thousand. From article two to article five, twenty thousand. From article two to article six, twenty thousand. From article two to article ten, five thousand. And on your paper right now, it says from article nine to article ten, that is not happening anymore. So I'm entertaining a motion here.
Moved.
Second, any discussion? Jim, do you wanna talk a little about this?
Yeah, I've talked about this a lot, we're kind of waiting and I was getting a little antsy about um. I I've been telling you it'll be on the next meeting, it'll be on the next meeting and 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 it wasn't, and it wasn't. So I looked at the numbers that I got from I I Bernice and I looked at the numbers. But they I knew they weren't finalized, I thought they they were safe. Um but as it turned out, we when the articles came in and they moved, they shifted some funds around, it actually overdrafted it. It should have thought just there were two articles overdrafted um and they were actually four. So not by law, one was by sixteen thousand, another by thirteen thousand. So we have more than enough money to cover them and laws requires us to not overdraw any one article. Uh I think it was five percent um leeway, so as you can see, chose to take the big chunk from article one, which has the most money, that's um uh regular instruction. And article two is our second biggest article, that's special education. So um even though most of them say article two, it's it's only sixty five thousand that it occurred there um and dispersed over those other accounts.
Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns from either of you? All those are favorable? Four is zero, thank you. All right, um the next item is a discussion regarding Ramble Road and Charlo Street. And this information was in the superintendent um report uh to start that conversation off.
Yeah, I'm just gonna reiterate that for it wasn't my report, but I just um want to just say that it seems that the whole idea of how Ramble Road is used and how Charlo Street is used has come up a number of times in the the first three years that I've been here. And it's come up at administrative level a couple of times. The conservative administrative level is really about a second egress during uh we really only have one egress. So if we need a second egress, we we have always known that we could use Charlo Street for emergency vehicles. And so I just further came up with a discussion in an administrative team retreat this summer. And um we just wanted to make some clarification. It's been twenty plus years since the board at the time made some decisions for what to do. And um so Joel and I met with uh uh former Winter Police Chief Ryan Frost, because I knew Ryan would have the history. And it was a great meeting, Ryan was very accommodating. And basically he said, and during that study, also served as town editor for for a brief period of time. So he had quite a different perspective or quite a good perspective on it. And basically, the first thing he told me that I did not know, although I probably should have, was that the decision to have not had not had pedestrians on Ramble Road was a is a school board decision. Um and we talked a little bit about Charlo Street and about the possibility of changing um the expectation of on Charlo Street. Um he didn't think it was a very good idea. Um honestly, I didn't really feel like we needed it. We just need to assure um our schools, particularly particularly those of them high school, if we have a second egress, um we need to make sure that work with the town to get there's a gate, if you go up to the top of Charlo Street, there's a gate um that that gate can open and does open and that it continues to be plowed. That's the biggest thing. Everybody that I've talked about it says, gotta make sure it gets plowed. Um if we open the gate and there's all kinds of stone away, it won't help us. Um so I really, I guess after looking at it, I really felt like um I'm not sure there's any action that the board uh needs to take except if you wanna change the expectation. I'd like to just reiterate the expectation. Ramble Road and and um uh four and chief Frost were very strongly about this, it's not really safe for pedestrians. You don't have a lot of pedestrians on it. I talked to Jay about this, um we had one student um who we had some concern about um for his safety. Uh I actually talked to the student myself as well and and I know Mr. before I spoke to him as well. And uh he totally understands that I I think we should just um reiterate that that's the right expectation that a pedestrian should not be on Ramble Road um and they should be using accessing the school if they're walking through Charlo Street. Uh it really isn't longer, as a matter of fact, it's probably easier to walk up Charlo Street uh and much, much, much safer. Um so what I would like to um say is we should I guess part of the reason I didn't realize that you know what the expectations were is there's no signage. So it seemed to me that it would make sense that we would invest in signs for um both Ramble Road and I don't know about Charlo Street, but maybe it's like no um access to schools um near Charlo Street just for the average um motor vehicle, they should not be going up Charlo Street, they should not be going through the gate that's not permissible. And but I wanted to talk about it here, because you guys feel differently and wanna pursue a different path than um than we should. Part of the other discussion this team up, the administrative team is um I think opening the pedestrian um Ramble Road to pedestrians is a good idea if we could ever get a sidewalk grant. Um and I talked to Chief Frost about that and he I I know various times in my forty year career um has been a big push for sidewalk development, school walk to school type programs and things um at the at the DOT, that is not currently um what they're interested in. So um we would ne- I will I will continue, I will tell you unless you tell me not to, um continue to pursue grants for sidewalks. And I think if we could ever get a sidewalk grant on Ramble Road, then I think we should change our mind, like kids walk up Ramble Road. Um but I think having spent some time with Joel and and other people looking into this issue that I if if we wanted to, I would recommend if we're gonna do anything, um we reiterate our expectation that Ramble Road is not for pedestrians, Charlo Street is and that Charlo Street is not for um for for vehicles accessing those schools except in a case of emergency. So if that's, I guess if you wanna if you wanna talk about that further, take specific action, we can add that as a future agenda, a run agenda. But right now, I'm just curious to see what you guys think.
I know last year there was a one of the buses, I think it was Lisa's bus, that did stop at the bottom of Ramble Road and let off a student there. I don't know if that stop is still there, but that could be an option to offer the students that do walk up and down the U S.
The student that was doing that is a student that I talked to and and I asked him specifically, did he have a problem going up um uh Charlo Street and he said no, that it's not a problem. Yeah, we definitely shouldn't be dropping kids off at the bottom of Ramble Road with an expectation they walk up it.
Any questions? Who who has the key to the door?
Okay, um there's a chain around the gate. There's probably a lock on it. But when there used to be a lock, but I was told by Joel um that Joel had it and the custodians, like there was more than one one key. And so custodians and Joel had keys to it, right now it's not currently locked, but but Joel wanted sort of send that message out there, but.
Um yeah, that question was um I think we need to monitor that, because I never really paid attention. When I started, you know, I was kind of flat, I don't need to start what's in, when it's got locked. Is that needs to be clear or?
I I also have that same question, um so the emergency vehicles, no, like I'm just moving the chain, that's already something that goes into it. Um I had my oldest walked up that road and went to time and it was pretty rough um with the ice and stuff. I'm guessing that's just kind of made from the East to Maine. Um but a lot, you know, piggybacking what Tim said, it's it's monitored, I think that's gonna be the way that students get to school. It's I mean, just today, I saw two students walking up Ramble Road. I know it's happening, it's it's kind of hard to monitor, I think, because, you know, the school on top of the hill and you can't really see the students, so.
So it's this, I think the the trickier part, it's me and I don't know what we wanna do about this is there are there are people that are not students. There are people out walking and they walk up Ramble Road. Um I don't know. I don't know what we do about them, if anything.
I think aside from hoping that it's not a pedestrian road, there's really nothing you can do other than, you know, ask the police to take notice and do you really wanna go that far? You know, as long as our students are being safe, if an adult decides that they're gonna walk up the side of other road that we ask them not to, they assume whatever consequences come from that decision. That's my thought.
I do like the idea of uh of doing a sidewalk grant to um in the future.
Okay. Okay, yeah, okay.
Love the students.
Do there, do you have any comments about that? Walking regular versus Charlo Street?
I feel too doing it for cross-teacher practices, right up it. And Charlo Street is a much better alternative because less traffic up and down because it ain't no problem. So I think it's working fine for that.
I have to agree with that, with Charlo Street um being a better alternative. I've been back to school a few times and that's really, that's just.
Thank you, okay. Um the next thing we need to do is decide on who is going to be our representative and alternate to the MSNA conference, which is October twenty sixth and twenty seventh.
Before you do that, um you just said what the dates are. Uh Alicia's already let us know, but if any of the others, either of you, any of you planning to go either day, that's neither to go both days, you have to commit to both. Um you can let Colleen know by this Friday, I don't see any time for it. Let us know, then she'll register anyway at the same time. She definitely do it, Colleen.
Okay, um I know that when you came, when the two of you came on the board and you were talking about um committees and appointments, I know Alicia that you had um uh talked about the interest of being the representative too, then are you still feeling that you want to do that? Definitely, okay. Um I know that Catherine has said that she would be interested in being an alternate unless somebody else is feeling strongly that they would like to do that instead.
I'd be interested in being.
Um do you want to be an alternate, which means if she can't go and you do the voting, or do you want to just go?
I'm the alternate, okay.
Okay.
If she's good, well, she's.
Right. Okay, um I think then because you're here, uh we'll put you down, Tim, you you can't because of your work schedule, right? And I I same for me, I know Catherine had some interest, but she may go anyway, um so yeah.
This is undue.
Perfect, you don't have to go.
Um, okay, yep. Are we still talking about the MSNA conference or are we talking about the delegate assembly? There's two different ones, there's um the fall conference at the Massachusetts Center and then there's a delegate assembly on the twenty first. Right, you're talking about the conference right now.
Okay.
Then we'll be talking about the the delegate assembly. Um so Jim, what you're saying is let people know by Friday, let comes up by Friday about the conference.
Yeah, the conference. The conference is on, conference is the first.
Okay, so this one's the first. Okay, um great then, so let Colleen know by Friday of this week if you wanna go to the conference. And then I will entertain a motion to nominate Alicia as the delegate to the twenty twenty three assembly for the MSBA conference.
So moved.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four to zero. Thank you. I move to nominate Ivy Port as the alternate delegate to the twenty-twenty-three assembly for the M S B A conference.
So moved.
Seconded. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Four to zero, thank you. Alright, um, I do have a form that I need to fill out, so before you leave, if you come as soon as I can get some information from the, I appreciate that. I will entertain a motion to approve the following policies or exhibits for first reading. I K F graduation requirements, J J I B C relations with booster groups, J L C D administration of dedication to students, I J J instructional and library media materials selection, I J J E challenge of materials form, B E D F voting method. I have B E D F on my form.
Okay, so, that's a little weird.
Yeah.
I think there will be, uh, I think a little cross side of the board.
It's D F, it's D F. Sorry. Uh, B E D F voting method, J L C D A medical marijuana use in school, and J J I philosophy of athletics.
So moved.
Seconded. Alright, um, so let's go through these really quickly, they start on page thirty-seven, which is a completely teeny tiny light green color, uh, for I K F graduation requirements.
So we go over this again, just to clarify the language, okay. So, um, once again, um, making sure that we, we're going to be, um, adding the language opportunities to earn community service hours will be made available within the school day, but students may earn their hours outside of the school day as well. Um, the next is J J I B C relations with booster groups. That's a language change of approval of the athletic director and the booster board for E and F. Um, actually, F was athletic director or activities director. Um, under section nine, booster groups will not pay coaches or officials. The language change was they are permitted to purchase equipment or pay for transportation directly with prior approval of the athletic director, for N, yeah, correct?
The N.
So. Next policy is J L C D administration of medication to students. Under section D, delivery and storage of medication, we have a language changes of if not, the medication will be disposed of properly, and we took out the language, the school nurse, um, the language that we removed was for healthy under the supervision of the school nurse. Um, under section B, uh, we did the same thing, the school nurse, um, and took out for healthy under the supervision of the school nurse. So we're just having the school nurse have the language proposed. Um, under G, we have medication may be administered during the school day by licensed medical professional. Uh, we added or designated school personnel acting within the scope of their licenses. We removed the language that says the school nurse under the administrate, uh, administrative supervision of the superintendent will provide direction and oversight for the administration of medication to students. Um, under K, we took out a note which says while it is anticipated that most training will be done by the school nurse, there may be situations where its training is done by the school physician, department of education staff or others. Therefore, we have used a phrase review of the documentation of training and, will be addressed to editor.
Okay.
The terrible section. And that is it for the policy. Policy I J.
Before we want, I just want you all to know, also many members already noticed that, uh, when this policy came to us, we ate, the, the three school nurses sat together, all three of them, and made those changes, so it's very good to know.
Policy I J J instructional and library media materials selection. We changed language, um, the school board expects the director of teaching and learning to report on progress made in aligning instructional materials with curriculum development, et cetera. Um, we also, under definitions, instructional materials, making textbooks and other print materials, um, we changed online textbooks and instructional materials. And under challenge materials, uh, we changed the language, the school board recognizes that objections may be raised occasionally by students, parents or school staff. We took out people from the members. Um, in the event that a concern is raised, the following procedures will apply. We changed complaint to concern, we felt like it was spread their language. And added concerned party, um, to subset, to the section B. Um, I J J E, the challenge of instructional materials form. Yes, this is the form that goes with that, um, policy, and we have added film, DVD, audio, um, under author, we have creator, and then we added a email. Um, B E D F believe method, there are no changes to B E D F. J L C D A medical marijuana in schools, there are no changes to J L C D A. J J I with republic schools, philosophy of athletics, and once again, there is, are no changes here as well, J J I.
Okay.
Can I just show quickly, the, and you'll see this a lot, um, moving forward, and it's part of a conversation that we, we felt we needed to have. Um, when certain policies get brought to our attention, because they, they get, have to be applied at some point, then we, um, sometimes, a lot of times they end up in a policy committee agenda if they're more than five years old. So all of these ones that have no changes, um, were brought to our attention for various reasons, and they, um, we got updated policies and there were no changes, so we just need to, our goal, remember, is to try to lay eyes on all these policies every five years, and that, it's my fortieth year, I've never, ever seen it happen, but it's a good goal. And one last thing, um, if you can indulge me just for a second, is, um, the reason that I, I wanted to shed it extra is, as a committee, we're thinking we could actually go faster, um, we could, we become pretty efficient, I think, and, but the real question is about whether or not, we're, we don't want to overwhelm the board, and we don't want the board to redo the work that the policy committee is doing, so it's not really a trust thing, cause I want you to, the, the process allows you a month after something essentially has been introduced to you to give, to give feedback to the policy committee, so we can make any, any proposed changes. Um, but I, I think if, I was a little nervous about putting eight new policies on the agenda, um, but, but I'm thinking we can do it. And if we're, if we come close to getting that highest on every policy in five years, we're probably gonna need to be doing eight, nine, ten policies, yeah.
Um, as a follow-up to that, um, our next meeting is until October eleventh, um, so the earliest that these will be brought for second reading is October eleventh, so is that the earliest? Um, I don't think you understand what I'm saying, that's okay. It's okay. So if, as you're reviewing these, if you have any changes, comments, questions, concerns, uh, for any of them, please send them to Jim, Alicia and Catherine, um, so that they can discuss them during the, um, the committee meeting before they're brought to us for second reading. Um, so, with that said, um, all those in favor of approving these policies for the first reading? Did, who approved your motion, did she second it? All those in favor of first reading? Okay, four to zero. Alright, um. Alright, are there any suggested additions to future agendas by any of you, we'll start with you Ivy. Okay, no? Jim, Alicia? No. Okay. Um, Joseph or David, is there anything that you feel like we need to bring in front of the board? Okay, um.
I do not.
Any school or comments, we'll start with you Tim. None. Ivy.
I do, I just want to say the nurse Melissa at the grade school did an amazing job, um, two students got stuck by me in the play yard, um, my child was one, um, and did amazing job, and I live and stay in school, so I'm just gonna give her big kudos for, for quick thinking and taking care of the situation, she did what we needed.
Nothing, okay. Um, Joseph? Nothing, David?
Um, all the stuff I said about spirit week last week, we scratched that, it was moved to the, uh, in October the ninth to the fourteenth. Um, one last thing, right, just thought, cause it just happened, you feel like you beat Class A, Lesonski, this happened to me, two to zero, right? That's it.
Can I add to that? Sure. Uh, they, they beat Lesonski two to nothing, and Lesonski had just, the, eight prior to that ended uh, against Kevin, who had not lost very recently since two thousand seventeen. So, they beat Kevin, we beat them.
Uh, I think the only comment that I have, and this is, um, for Jilline and for you. Um, last night I was talking with my husband before he went to, um, a meeting with the Masons, and, uh, he brought up the fact that one of the teachers at the grade school is um, very concerned about how fast people are driving on highway D A V. Um, and looking at possibly, um, putting in some kind of speed, um, reduction, maybe, um, speed box or something like that. Um, and, uh, they were, um, talking with their husband, who is also a Mason, about is there a way that the Masons can, uh, provide a grant for someone, all of that. Um, and I had to just quickly remind my husband that we don't own that street, um, so please make sure you're talking with the town before asking, before they ask for money to help to do that. Um, so while you're working with, um, the town on speed mediation there, um, if there is some need for grant money, uh, let us know, but I have to talk him down from asking for the money last night. Um. So, the good news is, we've talked about kind of globally that it's a concern. Um, I was wondering, I was talking about the road behind the school down to the police station. But she said it's also part of that, so.
Yeah, uh, also not on the press. Um, alright, so, without objection, I will declare the meeting adjourned at seven twenty-five P M. Thank you.